I look forward to an informative meeting. The first briefing will be on the African American Cultural Center, the MOU. And Amelia, I've got you down for being one of the presenters, or do you want Doug to go with it?
Okay.
I'm in a sporting role this evening.
Sounds like a winner to me.
Mayor Sessons, Vice Mayor Jones, City Manager, and all of my colleagues. I stand before you again and appreciate your vote the last time to ask the staff to draft an MOU. We've been working diligently on that. And before going further, I want to thank Barry and Doug for working right along with me and the rest of the board. Today, we have several of the board members here, as well as important members of our group. Over on my left, I have Georgia Allen from NWA CP. We have Andrew Jackson from the African American Leadership Forum. We also have Mr. Jim Banks, who is part of the Executive Board. We have Addie Wright-Tomason, who is part of the Executive Board on my left. We have Dr. Linda Bright, who is part of the Executive Board. And we have Mr. Hugh Green, who is also part of the Executive Board for the African American Cultural Center.
We welcome each and every one of you here.
Thank you. So at this minute, I'm going to turn it over first to Doug to share with you what the staff, our staff has come up with.
Thank you, Amelia. Doug?
Thank you, Dr. Ross Hammond. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, certainly a pleasure to be with you. Mayor, I know you appreciate brevity, so I'm going to be pretty quick this evening.
Love you.
In part because we spent a lot of time in July briefing the councils, but I'm going to give you just, for those at home and those that didn't see the July briefing, give you a quick overview of what we talked about then. Remind you of the concept and the site that we're talking about. You all have received the memorandum of understanding, but hit the high points of what's in that MOU and talk you through the next steps. But you remember, Dr. Ross Hammond and I stood in front of you in July and talked to you about the, we reviewed the mission of the African American Cultural Center, talked you through what the goals are, what we were trying to accomplish with the facility. Spent a lot of time talking about the organization. As you heard, you've got a lot of folks that are already involved, but a number of committees that have been set up, and a lot of significant members of the community that are really engaged in this project and sort of walked you through what the roles of each of those groups were. Also gave you some context of the site itself and why we felt like it was relevant, in part because of the 12 African American neighborhoods, historic neighborhoods, half a dozen of them are really in close proximity to the site. But also talked about the idea that we wanted to talk about the African American history that has taken place in Virginia Beach, but also give a context of its role in the region. And then finally, kind of talked you through, obviously, what the benefits of doing that and even what some of the economic benefits would be. You remember the site there at Lake Edwards Park, there at the corner of sort of where Newtown and Diamond Springs meet. You can see sort of how we've laid that out. You remember the idea of that pavilion hut that it was in the middle and some wings that come off of each side and how it would tentatively sit on the site. And then we talked to you about, really, what was, what are we talking about? And we were talking about as much as a 25,000-square-foot building with a series of meeting rooms, maybe some classrooms, places for performing and literary arts, and maybe some rotating exhibits. Like many of these facilities, you want that multipurpose room, that banquet sort of space that the community can take advantage of. We talked about, again, the exhibit space, obviously offices, restrooms, those sorts of things. But almost as importantly is a lot of outdoor activity and a lot of public, we think, an opportunity for some public art on the site. And you can see some of the walking trails that are out there. Obviously, parking's a big, will always be a big need, so we think the order of magnitude, 90 parking spaces. One of the nice things about this site right now is it's really undeveloped, and there's a lot of greenery and trees and whatnot, and so we want to maintain a significant amount of the natural area. Basketball courts are really an important part of that neighborhood, and we want to maintain those. We may relocate them, but certainly they'll be on site, but make sure there's an appropriate buffer area from the center itself back into that sort of space. And a lot of conversation in the early days about how you would get in. Would you come in off of Hampshire Way or other places? And I think part of what Dr. Ross Hammond heard from the folks helping her is really want that access off of Newtown Road, so that's how we have got it set up at this point. And again, this is just the rendering that we showed you, that again, that pavilion hut where, you know, a lot of the community conversations and dispute resolution and training of the next generation and those sorts of things took place. The MOU is really what we're talking about, and you'll see when we get to next steps. It's tentatively scheduled for October 3rd, or excuse me, October 6th, to come before you all, but there may be a conflict with some folks at VML, so it could get pushed out a couple of weeks. But in any event, what you saw this weekend is obviously a document that has the city as one party and the African American Cultural Center as the other party. Again, we're talking about approximately five acres there at Hampshire Lane, but again, at the intersection of Newtown and Diamond Springs. And again, the purpose is really to outline the agreement and the roles and responsibilities of the two groups and become the basis of a development agreement. But I think maybe most importantly is to send a message to the community and the stakeholders that the city and the council are committed to the project and allows Dr. Ross Hammond and her folks to go out to that community and frankly, do some fundraising and do that with confidence that the project will move forward. In terms of the African American Cultural Center, this is, you know, the model really is the city providing the land, facilitating the process, providing some staff support. But really, the African American Cultural Center will do the heavy lifting in terms of bearing all the costs associated with design and development, construction, ultimately operation and maintenance of the facility. And again, depending on fundraising and scoping of the project, a 10,000 to 25,000-square-foot building. As soon as the MOU is executed, they'll begin the fundraising efforts in earnest. And what we've got in the document right now is you've got to have the facility built within five years of when you all sign that memorandum of understanding. In terms of the city, again, obviously, our responsibility is to convey that property for that sole purpose. That's the only thing they can do with the land is to build that African American Cultural Center.
The question, Doug?
Oh, yeah.
The building has to be complete within five years?
That's what we've got in the MOU right now. We can certainly extend that.
Right, because that's important we have for construction improvement.
Yeah, it seems like a short amount of time.
Right, so construction improvement.
Okay, so we could put, to begin construction in five years?
And, but I still, you need a finish date, too.
Right, right.
But I don't think that's realistic.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Obviously, we've got the reverter provision for exactly what Ms. Wilson's saying, in the event that the project doesn't move forward, you know, or the land comes back to you all. And we would retain and maintain a public easement over all the property. And really, it's as much about us making sure that we maintain the quality of all of the outdoor space and the things adjacent to the building. So where do you go from here? Again, it's scheduled for your agenda on the 6th of October. Now, this is one of those situations where we're dealing with land, and so we need a supermajority of councils, so we need nine of 11 members to vote for this. If we do lose two or three folks to a VML meeting that on the 6th that we can't get back, then we would just move it. We think we're going to lose three? Okay. So we may very well move this to the 20th. The other big step is to initiate the fundraising, obviously, is the big activity that starts to take place now. Thing is really important to commit, to continue that community involvement and community engagement and make sure that there's no uncertainty of what's happening or misconceptions of what's happening out there. Once some, a certain level of money has been raised, then we start the design efforts. You know, I think the folks at the SGA office and Parks and Rec have done a fabulous job of giving a concept plan, but we need to get down to some, really, some design elements and start to be able to cost these things. And part of the MOU that we want to see is, you know, what is the budget? What is the pro forma? What is the operating plans? All those things would be things that we would develop or see developed and then have to have in place before we executed the development agreement. And y'all hear me talk a lot about the cultural plan whenever we're talking about the arts and culture, and we'll roll out that cultural plan this fall, where we want to do this within the context of that cultural plan and make sure that that's an important part of that plan and one of the priorities. And frankly, it is in terms of our recommendations. So with that said, I'm going to turn it back to Dr. Ross Hammond for the close.
All right.
And especially that we mentioned about the VML, because I will be going, Ben, as well as Rosemary.
Who's the third person?
She said Ben.
Oh, Ben.
Yes. So most likely, if that's okay, we can move that to October 20th.
We thank you for representing us so well, all three.
Right. Just in closing, I want to mention that this model, we talk about how unique the arena model is for public-private partnership. The African American Cultural Center is also a unique model for telling the important history of our community. We have a rich history within our 12 historically African American neighborhoods that is not broadly known. Within the model being framed within this MOU that we're discussing this afternoon, we are creating the opportunity to tell that story. The reality of the city of Virginia Beach is every story cannot be just told alone. Nor can we develop, own, and operate this learning enrichment center. But we, as the council, can provide the land and staff support which will allow the community to step forward. It's an empowering feeling. Knowing the city has committed the site allows the community to begin its fundraising efforts, which will lay the groundwork for private citizens to scope the project, then build and operate an African American Cultural Center in Virginia Beach. Just last night, I was over at Lynn Haven Road Baptist Church, over 148 years old, and we have another AME out in the Punggol area, United Methodist Church, which, again, they have a lot of history. And I was at the Addux just last Saturday where someone stopped me to say, "We hear you're doing this, and we're planning to host an event in Norfolk to raise awareness of the significance of African American structures and add effects." You're looking at things dating back to mid-1600. I think this is the opportunity for us to do the right thing and move forward. So with that, I will stop, but I do want to introduce a few more. As you see, already, we have some more coming in. We have Bruce Williams, who's a member of the E-Board, and his wife, who is here. Yesterday, we had people from Newsome and New Light, and they're all talking and hoping. I think this will be a unifying opportunity for you all to see how that, oh, we have another person over on here, Mr. Marcus Schreben, who is also a member of the E-Board. So just, they're coming out today to tell you that we are serious about making this happen. We're going to be very strategic and, one day, starting off, expanding past five years to give that opportunity so we can put something that is very important, that will also be a win-win for the city and a learning opportunity for our young people and generations to come. Thank you.
Well, I speak for the entire council, thanking you for your leadership on this, Amelia. And, you know, we're looking forward to supporting you with this project. I would agree with Rosemary, you might want to put construction to start within five years, something like.
And at a completion date.
Yeah, another five maybe, so, yeah, okay. But I think that's a great point. But we look forward to great success.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right.
All right, folks, we'll move on to constitutional officers' compensation. Mr. Spore, and I might note, Mr. Moss is being delayed at work and will not be in attendance, but he has written his comments pertaining to Mr. Spore's recommendation, which are out there somewhere for y'all to look at. And, but anyway, that will be part of our record.
Okay, Mayor, and members of council, let me just say by way of introduction, the structure of state government in Virginia is pretty unique, and one of the uniquenesses of it is the constitutional officer system. And by that, we're talking the five officers, the Commonwealth's Attorney, the Sheriff, the Commissioner of Revenue, the Treasurer, and the Clerk of the Court. And the way we have established salaries for those five positions in the past has been, frankly, I have gotten together with the Director of Human Resources, we've taken a look at the positions, the duties, responsibilities, the budget, the complexity of the job and those kinds of things, and set that salary into the city's equivalent pay plan. And this, earlier this year, one of the officers really questioned that, and it got me thinking about it frankly, as well. And so, in an effort to try and really answer the question, who is responsible for setting those salaries, I've drafted this policy for your consideration. We sent it out a couple of weeks ago. But essentially, what it does is memorializes the process of making a recommendation at the same time that we bring the budget forward, and then puts that responsibility to set those salaries clearly on the shoulders of the city council, much as you do with the appointees that you review and set the salary each year. This recommendation would also have you do that salary setting on a formal basis by council action each year, really contemporaneously with the budget process. We would bring you a recommendation, and then you could make the decision. So I think it's important to try and clarify who really does set those salaries and have that in an open and transparent process. So that's really the purpose of the policy. If there are any questions on it, there's a draft of the agenda request form. If you want to proceed, we would put it on one of your future agendas. The council policy itself, which would go into your council policy manual, that really memorializes the process that I just described, and then a resolution adopting the policy.
Very good. Any questions or comments? All right, we'll throw it on there in the upcoming meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. EMS trends and recommendations. Bruce Edwards.
Hey, Bruce. How are you?
Hi. Hope everybody's doing well.
Great.
Mr. Mayor, through its strategic planning process, EMS has been looking to the future, looking at trends, looking at various aspects of the service and what we have experienced in the past and what we're trying to do to prepare for the future. So we wanted to, it's been a while since we've talked to city council about staffing and those kinds of things, and we thought that it would be some good stuff for you guys to know. We have a short presentation, Ed's going to give it, that talks about the trends and a recent study that we did by surveying our volunteer rescue squad people to get their feedback, get their input, and how they were thinking and so forth. So what I'm going to do is turn it over to Ed, and he'll go through the slides, and then we can ask, you can ask any questions that you.
Thank you, Bruce. We're glad to have you.
Thanks, sir. Well, good afternoon. Before I get started, I'd also like to introduce our public safety analyst, Robert Davis. He's sort of the man behind the graphs, the man behind the curtain in terms of all of our research and analysis.
We welcome you, Robert.
So why are we here today? Well, as you know, we live in an ever-changing world, whether it's the changing economy, increasing calls, decreasing resources, there are changes in volunteerism trends. And so even though our rescue squad members were providing great services, great outcomes, we never want to rest on our laurels, and we've sat and seen some changes in our manpower. And so, taking a proactive approach, we did some research and have identified some things of interest, both in terms of trends and also want to talk to you about what we've got in mind for working on them. What I want to do today is really talk about the life cycle of volunteer and the trends along each way, look at the demands of our workforce, and some potential strategies for the future. And again, things are going well, but we know we need to continue to massage the system to move forward. As volunteers pass through the department and through the city, there are distinct stages in what I call the life cycle. We cast the net, we hook them. With interest, they come to our office and attend an orientation session where they fill out an application. We approve that, and then those that want to be trained go to our EMT class. We train them for free. Those that are already EMTs, we send them off to a field internship, and then that's when we start employing them. We get them out there working on the ambulance, and at some point, of course, they exit the system. And we can look at each of these steps along the chain and find ways where we lose people and also where potential ways to gain people. Looking at people who've come to orientation, this is that first, we've hooked them, they've come in to see us. Looking back to 2007, you can see some distinct trends. After 2008, it starts going up. Two big things happened. A, number one, the Virginia Beach Rescue Squad Foundation, in the 2007/8 timeframe, started recurring major investment in recruiting for volunteer rescue squads. That was a big driver. We've also seen on a national level with the economic downturn, people are looking for vocational training, volunteerism opportunities to build their work experience, and we've seen that nationally, of people turning to volunteer organizations to either advance themselves or just plug the gap while they're looking for a job. So we've seen big numbers up to 2012, at which point we're starting to see some decline, but we're still far above the 2007 levels. Not everybody who comes to orientation actually gets approved to be a member. Many, many come and say, "Whoa, you want me to actually stand duty? No, I can't do that." Or, "I thought I could do this without being trained." Others, bad driving records, criminal records, what have you, so not everybody gets approved. Around 40% consistently get approved, yes, you can come join the department. So what this says is the more people we bring to orientation, statistically, the more people we're going to approve. We had a slight downturn last year. I don't believe that's a trend. We know there were some issues with the state changed some screening requirements with fingerprints. We were doing city and state checks, and with some lobbying efforts by the foundation and the city, we've rescinded that, and we think that number's going to go back up next year. Looking, though, at our folks coming into training, the red line indicates the number of people that we brought into our classes, which, of course, matches that trend with more people coming in. We have four classes a year typically, and when the number started increasing, all those people started coming in, we just, we expanded the classes, and no one was turned away. We made sure folks got trained. But interestingly, we saw the percentages, though, of graduations declined with the bigger classes. And of course, folks in the educational field will celebrate that and tell you, "Well, we knew that." And so, it's a factor that we looked at, and one of the things, you know, do we change our tactics on pre-screening? We do no academic screening, so we do believe many of the people coming in is this economic downturn, we're just looking at anything, and then found this is college-level work, and it maybe wasn't for them. But definitely, smaller class sizes, better results. People do ultimately leave. Now, the blue line shows our exits, which you see have increased over the past few years. Now, this is folks who've been here for one day or 30 years. It's a mix. And I'll also point out, unless I specifically say certified, this also includes our administrative volunteers, our divers, our SAR team, and folks who do valuable work. It's about 20% of the workforce, but they're not contributing to ambulance staffing. We threw in the line showing as unemployment has decreased, you're seeing the exits increase, that is a national trend in volunteer organizations. All right, here's where the rubber meets the road. These are the people, the volunteers who are qualified, EMT or above, who are staffing the ambulances. There's at least two of them on every ambulance. They're probably 95% of the ambulances staffing out of the city. This is where we are. You can see, again, we saw a big peak there in 2010. We've had some decline, but we're still above 2007 levels. We are looking, is that the new normal? Are we downtrending? These are the things we're studying to see, where do we maybe need to intervene to push that number back up higher. We, also behind this 588, today, there's about 120 who are in either EMT class or riding as a third person on the ambulance in their internship phase. We have a steady churn of folks coming in and being trained. So looking at our call demands, the green bars are our calls. Like everything else, demands for service are increasing. We don't know why 2011, we had a good year. I don't know what happened there, but statistically, we're going up on demand as our population grows, our population ages, and we're seeing an increase in the complexity of the calls. Our volunteer workforce, you see there, again, the peaks and where we've gone, and that's what we've got to look at, how do we grow that workforce along with the demand? This is a busy slide, but focus on the green part, those are the average number of ambulances we're putting on the street. We, 2009, with 10 ambulances on the street, this is in the midst of that big growth, and even though you're seeing kind of those lines maybe going down some of the previous slides, we're steadily, consistently putting an average of 12 ambulances on the street for the past three years. Even though of maybe some numbers have left, we've really addressed efficiencies to optimize how we're employing those rescue squad members. It's pretty exciting. The purple line, we also do a measure called unit hour utilization. It's an efficiency measure of how often is a crew on a call. We're running consistently right around 50%. That's 50% of the time you can expect to be out on a call if you're on duty. Now, that's, the experts say 45% to 50% is optimal for efficiency, so we feel pretty good about that. We also know that it's based on people who are doing this every day or long shifts. Our folks typically work one day a week for 12 hours, and they want to run calls, so we believe our, actually, we can go UHU's a lot higher. A limitation of this, though, and a positive, this is average. So if you're in Sandbridge in February, your UHU may be around 3% or 5%, but if you're on Kempsville this afternoon, you may be at 70%. So this is an average. But the same applies around the clock. Utilization is much lower at night than it is during the day. And so, as we start looking at resources, how do we apply them? Let's apply them to even out that demand load. There's no need to cookie-cutter, it's got to be the same all the time. So our capacity, 2004, we did the significant changes in the ERS. We set the city standard, minimum staffing is eight ambulances for the city of Virginia Beach. And really, since 2004, 2005, in terms of major changes, that hasn't changed. We came back 2007, we presented a report to you and said, "Look, our long-term goal, our objective, is we want one ambulance for every 3,000 calls," which today would be up to 14 ambulances. And we're not there, but it's a stretch goal, it's where we would like to be. When we presented that goal in 2007, we didn't have the infrastructure even to support that. We didn't necessarily have more than 12 places where an ambulance crew could operate, but thanks to the changes over the past year, most recently, we opened the Thalian Blackwater Station, we now have 17 places where ambulances could be based. So we have some elbow room to grow or adjust resources to optimize. So it's a stretch goal that we've been building the infrastructure to support. And again, that 2007, we didn't come in and say, "Give us 28 more career medics." The rescue squad system stepped up, did the extra recruiting, and we've gone up today, we're averaging 12 ambulances on the street. When I called the supervisor driving down here, we're at 13 right now, plus six zone cars and a bunch of other supporting stuff. But looking out at the future, some questions will come up, how many volunteers do you need? We created a model, it's in the report, I won't get into the math. We created a model that said if you had volunteers who are working 36 hours a month, today, the minimum requirement's 48 for new people, and we've had some interest in lowering that. 36 hours a month, plus 15% of them are on leave at any given time, plus the two people that are going to call in sick every day, do all that math, and it comes out to, we need 690 volunteers to get to 14 ambulances. Now, remember, that's an ideal number. There's a lot of variables. I don't need 14 ambulances at 3:00 in the morning. We don't need necessarily even 14 ambulances at 3:00 in the afternoon, perhaps in February. And those are some numbers, Robert, we track by time of day, time of the year, and also, this doesn't include any impact of augmentation by career staff. So this is a model to shoot for where we want to go to. So what does all this mean? We've seen some declines. We've seen some issues from our peak in 2010. We're seeing fewer people coming in compared to, say, that peak, but we still remain strong. The volunteers are still delivering great service. Our outcomes, our patient satisfaction is very strong, and we're meeting the demands for service. We do understand that there are challenges ahead, and if we want to grow and meet the growing demands, we're going to have to do things to expand our service and go forward. All right. So to borrow from the 2040 visions, maybe some bold decisions are needed or bold steps to look towards the future. So we're looking at our business models today, how we do things within EMS. We're looking at our recruiting strategies. Today, we cast a broad net. I hope everybody in your consolidated utility bill, I hope you opened it, and saw that we, a flyer, this went out to every household in the state of Virginia Beach that gets a utility bill, has gotten this over the past month. It's a flyer for recruiting. Do we need to cast a bigger net, or do we need to cast more specific nets into specific target audiences, people who are looking for that vocational training? Of course, that comes within, how do we retain those folks? We've got to look at the new member intake process, is there a way to do better than 40%? We're rearranging staff to maybe do a little more hand-holding, calling, "Why haven't you turned in your physical yet? Why haven't you given us your DMV check yet?" And maybe build up there. We need to look at our retention efforts to keep people. We thank council for the $75,000 in this year's budget. We've already put some of that to good use, and we've got a team looking at the best ways to apply the rest of that $75,000 and other resources. I already noted, 48 hours is a lot. It's seen as a potential barrier to people coming in, and definitely, people staying at 48 hours a month is difficult. So we're looking at, can we adjust that minimum duty? Clearly, we can't do it, flip a switch, because today, that would be a hit on personnel, but is there a way to incremental approach, balance that out as we bring in new people? And lastly, reviewing the scheduling model. This is an exciting thing that, again, knowing the time of day, calls vary. So in July, we started moving our career So in July, we started moving our career medic augmentation where between nine and eleven, we bring in more folks on than we do at night. And what we're seeing then is that's putting more units on the street. Are there ways to apply that to the volunteers with more flexible scheduling? Put more of them into those peak times to address that high UHU in some of those times? So we're not ready to report out completely on how that's going with the augmentation, we just started, but we're seeing some really good results. So, in summary, that was a quick review of a twenty-page report with a lot of stuff. I did not get into, we've also done a detailed retention survey, again, survey report, which is a whole nother twenty slides that you don't want to hear from me today. But the volunteers are providing great services. I cannot stress that enough. The sky is not falling. But we do know that we need to continue to tweak and massage the system and we appreciate your support and investment.
Okay, we do have some questions. Jim, good.
Thanks. And I appreciate the comment you made about the seventy-five thousand. What is that being spent on right now?
So far, we did what we call a splash day, where we purchased tickets for members to go to Ocean Breeze Park. We've got...
And their families.
And their families. We've got some other retention things that they're looking at, some recognition items, like we call trinkets and beads, and some different awards. We're holding a little bit for some grants we've applied. Hopefully, we can do some grant matching and leveraging that. And then the rest, this committee's going to decide how to slice up that pie.
The other thing that you mentioned on there, and I'm glad that you talked about that, because I think the mayor and I talked about it when we met with you, we met with Chief Edwards, and you knew he was there too, is the hours, you know, the forty-eight versus thirty-six. So, understanding correctly that your ideal number there is thirty-six and fourteen ambulances.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're working towards that. The other thing, and now going back to the, this report that was given to us in our package on Friday, and I don't know if you have it on Chief Edwards, but on page eleven...
Green floor.
And then on page twelve, there's, I don't know if you know this or not, but the three percent on page eleven, it doesn't, there's nothing that's, it's not labeled, so I don't know what that is. But...
We can go back and get to that.
Yeah. Thirty-two percent cite atmosphere, work environment as a barrier to retention, and thirty-eight percent cite leadership and administrative personnel as a barrier. On page twelve, this refers back to another chart that was given to the foundation. And it cuts off at twenty-five, but on the original chart, twenty-four percent say similar situation is the reason why they may leave. And I guess my concern is, is we know the big ticket item is the thirty-six versus the forty-eight, or the forty-eight hours or less. But clearly, this is a big ticket item in terms of work, atmosphere, and what have you. And knowing that there is an issue with that, I guess my question is, is there a plan to dig into that deeper, find out what the issues are, and attack that with the retention? Because, you know, if we know that, you know, forty percent or twenty-five percent or whatever are otherwise dissatisfied separate from the hours, it would seem to me that's something we need to look at.
And we have been looking at that. What we know for a fact that holds the volunteer rescue squads together is glue, is the camaraderie. And the relationships are extremely important. And we've noted that in a couple of areas, particularly in the areas of leadership, we have set out to provide them with leadership training. And I think that that's going to be one of the areas that we're really going to be looking hard at. Primarily because some of the volunteer rescue squad members have never seen that sort of thing or been in those kinds of roles before. And we just need to dig down into that particular one, because that's probably the bigger one of all of those retention issues.
Other questions or comments? You know, a few things. First of all, I hope you all know how much we support this volunteer rescue squad system. You know, it isn't just the mayor and the city council, it's the citizens of Virginia Beach. We're so appreciative of what we have. I would sit back and say to you, though, a couple of takeaways, which Jim hit on, is the hours. But if you ask me, thirty-six hours being required is too much to, to my honest opinion. As I sit back and think about how the rescue squad got a couple of extra years out of me, it's because I could do six hours a week. And that was six AM to noon, you know, that worked out great for me and another lady, and we did for several years. We could not do twelve hours anymore. You know, and we'd done our time before, but I think we've got to be able to provide more flexibility along those lines. I think that's how we'll get more people still on longer with it out, without it taking so many hours. And the other thing you hit on, Bruce, also, let's get on with this leadership training. You know, there are a lot of wonderful courses out there within this, I think the city has some that they put together. And we've got to realize, how many rescue squads are there now? Ten. Well, that's ten different leaders, you know? And they got a lot of responsibility. And if someone hadn't been in management or something along those lines, to get to that position without the proper training, we might be setting them up to fail. And I think we need to acknowledge that. But that, and along with, we've got to work with that, the foundation. You know, the foundation has a tremendous amount of resources, which have been very, very good to the rescue squads. But, I mean, I think if there are extra hits out there that are required in order to make sure that we move, continue to move this volunteer system forward, that, you know, we'll work with them, the city and the foundation together. And there are a lot of resources where you combine us both. And I think we stand ready to do whatever it takes, but some of these things, and I really wish y'all will look at reducing those hours. I mean, that is killer, you know?
It is. And currently, what's interesting is, we have about two hundred and fifty people at any one given time during the month who are on reduced duties right now. So we're trying to flex as much as we can on that. But I think what Ed touched on earlier was the permanent aspect of how can we move toward less duties? Because when, you know, when somebody's on an ambulance and it's very busy and they're running from call to call, it's, that plays on them too, in terms of...
It burns out.
It does.
It's a burnout.
But following up on something that the mayor said, and I certainly agree with you in terms of being generous with the hours or flexible, but there's also got to be a break point where if people aren't working so many hours, their skills are deteriorating, I would think.
True, yes.
Especially if they're in a place that's only getting five percent utilization.
Yeah, and that's always been the case.
That's always been the case.
You know, because you hit that on the head, if you're out of Kempsville, you know, you've got more calls in a day and you're going to stay, you know, up to date, you're going to practice what you've been taught. But when you don't get those calls, you know, and you could be out there forty-eight hours a week.
We got cases, one of this, we're seeing this, we're seeing members, hey, look, I don't mind being busy a couple shifts, but I need a break. And we're flexible, I call it kind of flexible membership. Creed's in Blackwater, embrace, come on down. We'll let you go run once up, you know, at Plaza or somewhere when I'm busy, but come on down. So we think, opening the Blackwater Station, you build it, they'll come. We see some of that, not just the flexibility and maybe the six-hour shifts, but rotating through the busier locations. So we keep the skills up, but also not burn people out.
That's great. Shane, you have something?
I wanted to say thank you. I've had bronchitis and I couldn't breathe Friday, and my son got scared because mommy couldn't breathe, and he called 911. And you guys came out and, you know, I was embarrassed because I just have bronchitis. But anyways, he was scared to death and the guys took him out on the truck, or the ambulance, and looked around and took care of him and settled him down and told him he did the right thing and really kind of encouraged him, you know, to continue doing the right thing and praised him for what he did. So thank you on behalf of my family for taking care of my baby that way.
One more thing that I do want to throw out there is, I think we need to do a study of the type of calls we respond to. Because we respond to everything. And from the stump toe, please understand, you know, that's an injury, but I don't know that it's one we have to send an ambulance to. And that's been going on for as long as I remember. And I don't know if we can sit back and, you know, figure out, you know, how many calls we're responding to that really don't require, you know, a band ambulance crew to go to.
Yes, sir.
We're going to get it right. I thank you also very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Upcoming planning items?
They talk to your son but let you...
Barry?
Ready?
We are more than ready.
Good afternoon.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to make your day, I'm going to make this before five.
We're glad to have you, SAR.
Oh, good afternoon, mayor and city council. Thank you for the opportunity to be the acting planning director. Typically, pretty good at acting, so we'll see how I do today. So this is typically a glimpse with a theme. I don't have a theme, so I'm just going to go, I have a theme. Well, I do have, actually, I have a theme. They were all approved by planning staff and approved by planning commission. So there's eleven of them between October sixth and October twentieth. So if you're okay with that, we're done. No, actually, I'll go through them. Okay, here we go. For October sixth, we have three in the Beach District, which are Eastern Shore Chapel, which is an expansion of a cemetery, La Ray Tucker, this is going to come up again, that's a seven-eleven, that's the name of the applicant. All safe storage is on Oceana Boulevard. Lynn Haven District is a conditional use permit, Rachel M. Kitzmiller for home occupation, personal trainer. And Prince of San District, modification of conditions for Forefront Christian Church. And also in Prince of San was the RV Management Services, which is a campground modification of conditions. The Eastern Shore Chapel Cemetery is located off Alaskan Road. This gives you an overview of the site. This gives you a detail of the site, which is significantly attractive tree site. It's not adjacent, it's separated from adjacent residences and uses by existing trees and natural areas. I'm not going to give you the whole background of the Eastern Shore Chapel, but basically, they want to ask to expand and develop five acres of wooded portion and expansion of twenty-five hundred new grave sites. This shows you the location of the new grave sites. And again, it was, there was no opposition from adjacent property owners. Planning staff supported the recommendation and it was adopted by consent with one exception, so it was nine-zero and abstentional.
I might have a conflict there, I don't know.
Do you have a conflict? Actually, anyway. La Ray Tucker, this site is a conditional use permit for fuel sales and convenience store, South Lynn Haven Road and Selina Drive. And that, like I said, there's another one, and the applicant's name is La Ray Tucker. This site you might be familiar with, again, Selina Drive and South Lynn Haven. It is a, it is a site that is not in use at this time. It is a commercial building and it is empty and has no use. It has a history, but it has, it doesn't have anything going on right now. The proposal is to completely redevelop the site with a new seven-eleven convenience store, the existing building will be completely removed, a right turn lane will be installed as required, and all parking landscaping signage will meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. And I'm going to just skip, so I'll show you, the primary exterior is pretty attractive. It's a combination of ifus brick and it has more transparency than a lot of these developments. So we think it's an attractive development. It replaces a deteriorated use and it was adopted by consent by the planning commission and supported by the planning staff, and there was no opposition. All safe storage is on Oceana Boulevard and it's requested for modification of proffers, and it also is a conditional use permit for a mini warehouse. It is located along Oceana Boulevard in a cluster of businesses, commercial activities, and storage facilities, and is adjacent to a residential neighborhood. It has a long history, the site, it had a previous conditional use permit, or change of zoning. But the applicant is coming in to change that and request to develop the parcels within three retail buildings and develop a miniature storage in the back. The, this is the, okay, good. Yeah, we didn't really need that one. Okay. Basically, it proposes to protect the neighborhood by putting the BMP in the back and significantly buffering the residential neighborhood. The applicant has worked with the adjacent property owners and there was no opposition. So it's a combination of buildings, two retail buildings, and a storage facility. The, go ahead. The development plan and the building materials are extremely attractive, well-done, high-quality. We think it'll be a great addition to that area. Now, are you going to show that? We have this one in here, but you can't see this from the site. So it's either buffered by planting or buffered by buildings in the front. So that is what the storage facility looks like. Planning staff recommended approval. Planning commission voted ten to zero to recommend approval, and there was no opposition. See a theme here? Okay. Rachel M. Kitzmiller is a conditional use permit for home occupation, personal trainer. It's in King's Grant on St. George Court. The request is to operate a personal training business from a single-family home. Applicant is fully licensed and insured. Training will take place in the garage, no outdoor activity. Will train clients on a one-to-one basis and possibly some small groups, not exceed four people. Hours of operation will be restricted to six to eight, and there's no changes in the home site. In addition, all of the adjacent property owners wrote a letter of support to the planning staff and commission recommending approval. Planning staff recommended approval, and by consent, planning commission recommended to approve this project, this condition.
Is this the first of its time?
I don't think so. No, I don't think so. No, this is fairly common.
You have other things?
Yeah. Forefront Christian Church is a modification of conditions, and that's on Holland Road. And here's the existing conditions. You see, most of the improvements will happen behind the existing building and you are not going to see much of that. But the existing, this is what the existing buildings look like, and the proposed improvements are identical in addition, or identical or similar in style. There are some portable units on the site and they will, are requested to remain in place for an extension of time period. And there's a hundred and five parking spaces. This is the site plan showing the existing building and the proposed addition, existing portable units staying in place, and a small addition, chapel addition in the front part of the building near Holland Road. Again, you see this is very, almost identical to the existing as far as the style and materials. Fortunately, there was no opposition and planning staff recommended approval, and by consent, the planning commission voted ten-zero to recommend approval. And for the October sixth meeting, this would be the last item, which is a RV Management Services, modification for conditional use permit for a campground. And it's a very, very attractive site, very, apparently very popular, well-used, very successful, has been recently purchased by a new owner. And the new owner requests to make some additions of indoor recreation buildings, crafts and games building, enclosing a refuge area, a scout camping area, a beach structure, and two maintenance buildings. This is the plan showing where they are. They are located mostly, if not all, in areas without any trees being removed, right? So there's no trees to remove, these are placed in places where, so that significant wooded area you saw before remains in place. This is the facilities that would be developed as far as the crafts and games building and the indoor recreation building, and a very attractive trash enclosure. Okay, I just wanted to see if I had your attention there. And a beach monitoring structure, which is a combination of places for staff as well as for services related to this activity. The beach area is, this is just to show you what it looks like, it's a very attractive site. This is the area, the proposed camping area. The planning staff recommended approval, the planning commission voted approval. There was no opposition, but there was discussion from the adjacent property owner about the danger to this... danger to this activity, to her cows. And once she was assured that her cows would remain harmless, would not be harmed, she was totally in support of the project. Okay, any questions on October 6th? All right, moving right along. For October 12, same story, there's five items that are recommended for approval, and all recommended unanimously by the planning commission. There are two in the Beach District, the Walmart at Hilltop, La Ray Tucker, another 7-Eleven, Kemsville District, Holloman Brown Funeral Home, Prince of San District, Monopole telephone, what do you call those? Antenna, cellphone antenna structure, and then finally, Ship's Cabin enlargement and non-conforming use. This one's fascinating because you can't even get there by car. So, but anyway. The Walmart is the Hilltop Kmart facility. It is by right except for the tire change and oil change facility. So, everything else is by right. So, we've had some questions on this, and so the existing building stays in place. The parking lot stays the way it is. Hopefully, maybe that could, will improve over time. The only, this only action is related to the auto care facility located in the back of the building next to the interstate, and that's the conditional use request. Services include tire replacement, oil changes, battery replacement, and light vehicle repairs. Shows you the site plan, the detailed site plan of the area of the car service facility. The Walmart will have a style similar to those that you've seen, as well as the, let's just keep going. The auto care facility will have a concrete masonry block in a gray color IFIS, which is exterior insulation finishing system and metal canopy. So, it'll be, and design-wise with the adjacent building. Because the repair facility is a minimum part of this project, and the overall upgrade for the site is significant, planning staff recommended approval, and planning commission by consent also recommended approval. Here's another 7-Eleven, it's a conditional use permit, fuel sales, it's Virginia Beach Boulevard, and it's on Virginia Beach Boulevard. I remember it as next to the Dunkin' Donuts, which is not there anymore, in case you all need a landmark. And so, this is the existing, it was a Sitco gas station, it's existing site. This is what, yeah, duck tonics is replaced, okay. And the site is located in Lynn Haven SGA. The developer has agreed to request reduced setbacks, which makes it consistent with strategic growth area plans of bringing buildings closer to the street, and also somewhat screens the activities of parking and the fuel, refueling facilities. The, there is no rear facade, it is all treated with brick and IFIS or other decorative materials, and even transparency on the side of the building facing Virginia Beach Boulevard. This is the site plan, you see it as a little unusual, what do we call this? The home plate design, which is becoming popular. It orients the activity from a business standpoint to the street with screening the parking and to a certain extent, screening the fuel facility. So, we think it's a very, and the materials are similar to the other ones, a lot of brick and IFIS, and again, transparency treatments on all the sides of the building, regardless if it's the front or the back. So, with that, we think it's a little more pedestrian, it's consistent with the strategic growth area, and it's an upgrade to the overall site. So, planning staff recommended approval, and by consent, planning commission recommended approval. Holloman Brown Funeral Home, a change of zoning, residential to conditional on Kemp, conditional O2. This property is surrounded on both sides by office-related uses, and it is on Kemsville Road. And here's the overall, you can see the sites to the left and the right are all low, one-story office, commercial-type structures. The proposal is for three one-story office buildings, total of 29,000 square feet. The buildings will be attractive, brick colonial, keeping with the adjacent properties, and are also owned by the applicant who owns the adjacent properties. The height of the buildings will not exceed 35 feet, and it's, we think it's compatible with the adjacent community. Here's the proposed site plan. It also proposes significant buffers to tying in with existing buffers or buffers to the adjacent residential uses or other land uses. This is the site, and we do not have an elevation, but this is proffered to be a similar architectural exterior of colonial style, height, columns, and some siding treatments. Planning staff recommended approval, and planning commission by consent voted to recommend approval. I'm getting there. I'm almost done. All right, so, a PI Telecom Infrastructure, which is a mona tower on Prince of San Road. It's adjacent to the, it's Dominion Power Right-Away, it used to be the Railroad Right-Away, and Christopher Farms is the residential community across the way. Here is the proposed site aerial with the aerial, the antenna shown 250 feet from Prince of San Road. The pole is 120 feet tall, will accommodate four sets of antennas. There is a documented need for the tower because of coverage gaps in this area, and we have a balloon test that show it will not be visible when there are leaves in the trees, and its visibility is minimal due to the amounts of trees to begin with. So, here's a plan that shows the proposed tower location in detail, and elevation of the proposed pole. Looks like nothing there, doesn't it? It's 120 feet high. And then, the site, and then, I'm going to, this is the coverage, but basically, what happens when you put this pole and another pole in, you get the next site, which, next page, which you get full coverage for the area. So, that we don't, we don't want to be without coverage. So, that's the proposal. There's the balloon test showing you where it is, and a graphic showing how the pole would look from Prince of San Road. Planning staff recommended approval, and by consent, planning commission voted to recommend approval. And last but not least, a fascinating project, Ship's Cabin Club, and we don't have an address because you can't get there by car. It is in the middle of Redhead Bay, near Ship's Cabin Road, and the improvements requested, and here's just a close-up, it's a camp, fishing cabin, those kind of things. It is a non-conforming duck hunting club with a dwelling, boathouse, and pier. Applicant desires to replace the existing boathouse, expand piers, and add two finger piers. The improvements will upgrade the site, but are not expected to increase the intensity of that use. And as we said, since you can't get there by car anyhow, we don't expect a tremendous amount of activity going here, but this shows the proposed improvements, and we are just thrilled they came forward to ask us for this so we can make them get permits. But other than that, planning staff approved, and by consent, planning commission approved that plan, that proposal. Okay. Did do it in 20 minutes. So, anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Barry?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Barry.
Anybody have anything to bring before the council before we adjourn? Mediations adjourn.